Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? One abstention, Alan. We have some announcements. The Town of Goffstown Sewer Department announces road closure at the intersection of St. Anthony's Drive and Hill Street, starting June 18th. This is an ongoing project. Alternating one-way traffic will be necessary at times. Delays should be expected. Hill Street will be closed from Ivy Street to St. Anthony's. Please seek alternative route. Any questions, please contact Goffstown Sewer Department, (603) 497-3617, extension 240, with any questions. Thank you. We have June 26th, WZID Neighborhood Block Party at Barnard Park. It's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Enjoy free food from NATO Subs, Nestle Toll House Cafe, Moose Ice Cream, Coca-Cola, free entertainment from the Manchester Monarchs and New Hampshire Speedway. You can also enjoy a meeting with various vendors for the event. And this is again at Barnard Park, June 26th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, sponsored by WZID. A reminder on Old Home Days, on June 21st, 2018, between 10:00 and 4:00 PM in The Village. All activities will include profit, nonprofit vendors, children's games, entertainment, a dunk tank, a bounce house, RE/MAX balloon rides, pony rides. There'll also be a shuttle between the Strawberry Festival at the Historical Society at 18 Parker Station Road and Old Home Day. We have a letter here from David French, who was the past Parks and Rec Director. It's addressed to me. It says, "Dear Peter, I want to take this opportunity to thank Rick Wilharmy and his staff, including Stasha Hurley and Mike Garette, for the wonderful job they did in this year's race. What a great day we had, and the crowd was great. Having this race in my name is a humble and joyful experience. My son and daughter both ran in the race. Having people come back after year after year is so exciting and looking forward to another great day. Thank you for your support for this event. On behalf of my panel, sincerely, Dave." Next year will be the 40th year of that. Been around for a while. I also have a little note here. The PD received a nice thank you note from a resident who experienced a particular difficult time last year. She thanked them for their compassion and all they do for the community, and it was Lieutenant Chavet and Officers Ball and Shabbat. Next thing, we have a couple of proclamations. First proclamation is the Town of Goffstown Post, Boston Post cane recipient. I'll read it. "Whereas June Esther Ackery LeBlanc was born in Lebester, Mass. on April 29th, 1918, and was the daughter of Ruth and Ulyss Ackery, and moved to the chicken farm on Goran Pond Road when she was three weeks old, where she was raised with her older sister Doris and younger brother Marvin. And whereas June attended Goffstown schools through grade 12, skipping grade 7, she was the only student, so they booted her up. After graduating high school in 1935, she attended Margaret's Butician School in Concord. And whereas June married Henry LeBlanc in 1938, raised three sons, Arthur, Marvin, and Melvin, built a new home on New Boston Road in the early 1950s, while Henry worked as a traveling insurance salesman. And whereas June worked at Carolyn's Beauty Parlour on Main Street for many years, which she subsequently bought and renamed to June's Beauty Parlour, and then selling it a few years before she retired to Carol McDougall. And whereas June lived most of her life in her New Boston Road home, finally settling, selling the home to her son Melvin, but continued to live in Goffstown in an apartment on Mash Road, and then at the meeting house on Reed Street while being an avid walker into her 90s, and she now resides at the Bel Air Nursing Home. And whereas June lived her entire life within five miles of her childhood home, but she also branched out to be a committed traveler by driving across country numerous times, visiting the distant US state of Hawaii and to 15 foreign countries between North America, South America, Europe, and Africa. And whereas June's 100th birthday celebration this year was on April 29th, and was attended by more than 70 friends and family, her two remaining sons, Melvin and Arthur, her six grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, and June continues to be lovingly surrounded with nieces, nephews, and children as well. And now therefore, we the Board of Selectmen, Town of Goffstown, County of Hillsborough, State of New Hampshire, by virtue of the authority vested in us and recognition of June's full life, do hereby proclaim that June 29th, 2018, be designated as June LeBlanc Day. Throughout the Town of Goffstown, New Hampshire, and urge all citizenry of the Town of Goffstown to recognize that day as such. This is given under our hand and sealed the 25th day of June in the year 2018. Signed by the members of the Board of Selectmen."
Chair, the Boston Post cane recipient, Mr. LeBlanc, as you read, is currently residing in the Bel Air Nursing Home. She could not attend tonight, but they would like to have her receive her cane on Thursday, the 28th, at 12:30 if at all possible.
Anybody, David, are you possible to go do that?
Possible, yes.
Okay.
I might be able to go.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
If you wanted to, want to go, that'd be fine.
What time in the evening?
12:30 during the day.
They have to do.
You can't make it, David, I'm around, I'm available.
And Mr. Chair, we have a representative from the Goffstown Swim, Glen Lake Swim Committee, I believe Gary Grolman.
Okay.
Got a bunch of us.
Is there a bunch of them there?
You say 12:30 Thursday?
12:30 Thursday.
Okay, so we have another proclamation. "Whereas Glen Lake and Goffstown on August 12th, 2018, will be the site of the first ever open water professionally timed swim event in Goffstown, New Hampshire. And whereas the event is sanctioned by the US Masters Swimming, a national membership operated nonprofit with 65,000 swimmers as members. And whereas the event is a fitting activity for commemorating the centennial anniversary of the construction of the Greg's Falls Dam. And whereas historical records and Native American legends indicate the high likelihood that the prehistoric-like aquatic creature has inhabited Glen Lakes since soon after the dam's construction. And whereas from even those early days, the aquatic creature has with great fondness been called Glenny. And whereas Glenny, despite its size and awesome abilities, has never been known to be the threat to residents to swim in Glen Lake. And whereas the safety of open water swim participants will be enhanced by Glenny's apparent desire to keep at bay other harmful creatures and the like. Now therefore, we the Board of Selectmen, Town of Goffstown, County of Hillsborough, State of New Hampshire, by the virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim August 12th, 2018, to be designated as Glenny Day. Throughout the Town of Goffstown, New Hampshire, and urge all of its citizenry of the Town of Goffstown to come watch the swim event with the knowledge that Glenny will be at the depths of Glen Lake, doing its part to make the day successful and memorable. Given under our hands and sealed this 25th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2018, and is signed by the Board of Selectmen." And we have a representative here for this. Pictures are good. Yeah, get a whole bunch of them, come on over. Come on in, come on in. You're right in front.
This is good.
Is that too heavy, Pete?
Thank you.
That heavy, Pete?
Got a question, how is the registration going?
It's going pretty well. We're up in the 50s, and we still have six weeks to go, so I think we're gonna be over 100.
Thanks.
Very good.
Chief Brown, has there been any reports of sightings out there? I know you did a little thing on the...
Come on, chief, give us a report.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Ten passes, is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Gregory Keating, come right up to the front, sit down.
Hello.
Name and address into the mic.
Yep. I'm Gregory Keating, 18 Ritter Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. And my request is for a Class 6 road that I just bought a piece of property on, and all the tops of the culverts are starting to show through because it hasn't been maintained in a long time. I want to get my truck and trailer down there, so I was just looking to be able to put gravel on top and just top coat. That's about it.
Any equipment that you're gonna be using that might crush the...
Well, that's actually, so I just got the okay from the building department to take down two small camps that are down on my property, and that's what I would like to get my truck and trailer down in there with a bobcat. So that's why I didn't want to go down there without putting gravel down first, because the tops of the culverts are actually showing right now.
Our DPW director just walked in, maybe she could... Have you had a chance, Megan, to look at Kennedy Hill and those culverts? Are we taking a chance of crushing those or damaging those if he goes over them?
I did not have a chance to go up today. Adam just told me about it today. I've been up there before, so years ago when there were planning board things that had come through, so I've seen what that area looks like. And, you know, it's just a washed-out dirt road. I guess I would ask, is the culvert crushed at all? Have you looked at it?
It is not, but they're all full of leaves, and the side trenches are full of leaves. So I was looking to really clear those out first, just so the gravel I put down doesn't just go wash away.
Yeah. So, I mean, I saw the picture Adam sent that showed it exposed. You know, if it's not crushed at all, then yes, obviously putting some gravel on top of it. I don't know what the plan would be. It's quite steep in certain areas out there, too. And, you know, there's different various washouts all up there, because it's just a Class 6 road. So I don't know what the, how are you getting up there? What's the, are you compacting or rolling anything? You just, because if you just put loose gravel down, my fear is it's just all gonna...
Yep, absolutely. So what I was looking to do was to be putting about a four-inch layer and actually dropping that with a dump truck, so, and then compacting it after just with a bobcat.
I mean, you think you can get a dump truck up there?
Oh, yeah. Well, so I'm actually on, if I come in from the Kennedy Hill side...
Oh, okay.
Then I'm actually on the flat part.
Okay, because I've come from the 114 side.
Yeah, it's very, very steep.
Yeah, that's a little bit...
That's the side I've been on, so I haven't walked it from the other side, actually, so... I mean, I don't see, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any problems. It's just gonna, you know, it's rutted out down the middle and stuff like that, so...
If it makes anything out, I grew up on a farm, so we've had dirt roads our whole life, so, I mean, I've been box blading and regrave, recreating every single year. So, I mean, I know it doesn't mean anything, but it is commonplace for me, but I know it's, you know, it's not commonplace for everybody.
David, you got a question?
I believe it was answered, it was from which direction are you approaching the property? It's from the high side.
Yep, correct. Yep, where the brand-new neighborhood is up there. Yep.
So Megan, you don't have any concerns?
No, I do not.
Maybe a follow-up?
Go ahead, David.
Once the gravel road is more better for transport, what is your intention for the property?
So I'd like to take down the two camps that are there, because the building department told me to call them sheds, because they're not on the tax plan. They are never insulated, they never had power. They're basically just a shed. They're all falling over right now, actually leaning on trees. And I had a couple trail cameras set up down there, and people are going in, checking them out, just to be nosy, even with the do-not-enter signs and all that. So I want to knock those down as quick as possible. And then eventually, five, 10 years later down the road, I would like to eventually build down there, but there's still a lot of paperwork that has to go through for that, so...
Separate action, thank you.
Oh, very.
Alan?
You said we're gonna put about four inches of gravel on this?
Yes.
I would suggest you use a little bit more than four, you're probably gonna put about... I mean, Megan, you would know as well as I do, you wanna put about six, eight inches maybe of foot over that culvert you're gonna...
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you're supposed to have a foot of cover over culverts, but...
Yeah, but I mean, if you're gonna put gravel in there, why not put a foot in and make it, it looks like it accepts it all day long. You've got quite a little ditch down through the middle anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's some areas that are a lot worse than others.
Right, right, right.
There's some culverts that I'd say two, three inches are exposed, some of them you're just starting to see the top, but, yeah, I have no issue with going more.
Go ahead, David.
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Keating to lay gravel on Kennedy Hill Road, which is a Class 6 road, to facilitate access to his property, map 5, lot 42.
Second. Motion by David, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? You're good.
I just wanted to wait till the motion was over. I did prepare a waiver of municipal liability form, if you'd like him to fill out one of those as well. It's a pretty small scale in this case, so I'm not sure if you wanted to require it or not, but you've got one.
Not a problem if need be, I mean...
I wouldn't worry about it. Like you say, it's a small-scale deal, it's not like you build a couple of those ground and green, it's not that serious.
Yeah.
No skyscraper involved, right? No skyscraper involved.
Oh, no.
All right, you're all set then?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir. Good evening.
Chief, are you ready to discuss your gas project? You're not waiting for anybody, right?
This is section 5. Good evening. You probably remember back, I believe it was in March or April, we were offered a grant from Liberty Utilities to pipe gas from the street to our furnace. At the Mast Road Station in Purnaraville, at no cost. Just a report to the Board, they have completed that, and they're just, you know, awaiting connection at this point in time. So we went to bid to get proposals for the gas conversion of the boiler at the Mast Road Fire Station. We did get one bid in from Granite State Plumbing and Heating for the amount of $19,911. This bid appears to be complete, looking it over with Lieutenant Connor. And it looks like they'll be using a direct vent system, not using the current chimney, because we had that inspected and it was cracked. So that also includes that, and it should be a complete job. With their permission, I'd like to award the job to Granite State Plumbing and Heating for the amount of $19,911.
Any questions?
Chief, how much was budgeted for that?
In that line, we have about $20,000 left in that line for the station improvements.
And then the grant?
The grant cost us nothing.
The grant was just to run the line.
Yep.
It's already done, they did it at no charges.
Right. That included...
I thought there was something about the connection, the, nevermind, keep going.
Yeah, so what they'll do is, they run the line, and they're gonna create a meter in the back of the station, and so when that's done, then we'll call the company and then have them do the conversion at that point in time.
On the exclusions, have you reviewed those?
Yes.
So there won't be a dumpster that's necessary?
I don't believe so, because it's just a regular boiler, something that could be possibly just put in a box. And we'll work with DPW for any oil, we'll say pump whatever oil we have and donate it to DPW.
Is there any asbestos in that that you know of?
That I don't know of.
Anybody got any questions?
Make a motion to allow the fire chief to move forward with the, award the conversion of the Fire Station 19 heating system to Granite State Plumbing and Heating, amount of $19,911.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, seeing none? Adam, did you check in when I asked you to check in?
I did. We are returning under item 8H, $14,802.49 in impact fees from the Fire Station 18 project. Chairman asked if that was something that could be put towards this project. I think if you'd like to do that, we certainly have other funds available, both in the budget or the remaining impact fees, but if you would like to direct those impact fees to this project instead of coming from the budget, you could. I think the proper vote, if you wanted to do that, when we get to 8H, would be to transfer the funds out of the Station 18 Capital Project Fund, back into impact fees, and then turn around and vote to pull from impact fees for this project.
What's the timeline on those impact fees?
I think there are three years left. Chief, does that sound right?
We were using up the ones that would expire the soonest, so I think there was two to three years left on the existing ones that are left.
I think that would be prudent if we only got a short time left on those impact fees to use them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I have no problems with that.
We'll do that when we get to 8H then. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Chief, thank you. Police chief, are you all set to go, chief? We're running a little ahead of schedule.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm pressing backup, Megan, help me out a little bit.
What's that? Adam to June.
I was just gonna let you know, item 6A, he was waiting some information from admin and IT, and I did not have that for him, so we're gonna have to push that item to the next agenda.
Okay.
If possible.
So we're just going with...
DC.
Good evening. For the Highway Safety Committee, we met on June 18th, and we took up a couple of issues that were on the agenda, that I had presented for recommendation from the committee to you. The first being a request to reduce speed limits on Rosemont Street to 25 miles per hour. That came as a result of a citizen concern. When we sent our officer out to conduct the study, unfortunately, it was not during the peak season of traffic or pedestrian traffic, but still the officer felt that there was a considerable need to potentially reduce the speed. A little history, just to kind of remind you folks, we, as the town, prior to my being a chief, decided that the idea for a town-wide speed limit was not the way to go. And I think for the majority of your Board, you folks have taken individually streets as they've come in to have a requested lowering of the speed limit. And I think that that was kind of the consideration of the Board to take them individually as they came in. The ones that we've done in the past were Laurel, East Union, a couple other ones that we've done as well, so... So this one is kind of in line, the unique situation with Rosemont Street, as you know, it has Roy Park at the end. This time of the year, there's a considerable amount of traffic. There is a sidewalk that only goes up halfway up that street, so there is a pedestrian concern as well. So when we had our committee meeting, we did have three representatives from the community that live on the street that had come out to express their concern, and in hopes that this would be able to be recommended by our committee to submit to you for, to put forward to the ordinance change through the public hearing process. So based upon that, that is our recommendation on a 4-0 vote to reduce it.
I can't believe you can go much more than 25 up that street.
One of the residents did do a test run, and they drove 30 miles an hour, and then they drove 45 miles an hour, and somebody had thought that when they were driving 45, it looked like they were doing in excess of 55, so Mr. Lunderville will probably like to explain. There's our folks right here, who, anyways, I thought I would bring it forward to you folks for recommendation for a reduction of a speed limit on that road.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, seeing none? Passes.
I would like, I would like to make that motion.
You make the motion.
I'll second it. We did. You make the motion, then.
Okay, you got that?
Hey, boy, David.
All in favor again, we'll go one more time?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, your next one, chief?
Next one is a Farm Ahead sign on East Dumbarton. I'm sorry, Monoona Road, I'm sorry, Monoona Road, I got my roads mixed up here. The requister was Mr. Cost from 244 Monoona, who runs a working farm, and his request was to have Farm Ahead signs on before and, on both sides approaching his particular location at 244. We sent an officer up to that area and surveyed, and although one of the particular one direction, there was proper amount of sight distance, the other one was clearly a little bit tricky. So we had discussed the possibility of just putting one sign up, and we thought we'd probably end up being back before the Board to request the other one as soon as his potential increase in farm tractor, as well as livestock crossing increased. He also plans to potentially expand some activities on the farm, so we didn't find that there was any need not to put the signs up. So based upon that, we had, the committee voted 4-0 to recommend installation of the signs in both directions on Monoona Road at the location.
Anybody got any questions? Adam?
Chief, is this the MUTCD, the pictogram tractor?
Yeah, so Megan was good enough to bring forth actual signage as to what it was gonna look, and I think that the proper one was the tractor?
Yes.
Yes.
Which budget?
It was MUTCD.
Pardon me?
Budget, do the signs come out of?
Out of the...
DPW, but...
DPW, yeah. How much are those signs?
Sign?
Thirty-five, forty bucks.
Thirty-five, forty bucks, not much.
She ensured that she has an endless supply.
Especially a farm tractor sign, I'm sure.
So thank you for your...
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion, we accept the chief's recommendation, the recommendation, I'm sorry, of the Highway Safety Committee for crossing signs for farm expansion.
Second.
Farm machinery, I guess we'll put it that way.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, seeing none?
Megan, are new signs like this, are they all the reflective style?
High intensity, charismatic, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, public hearings, first available meeting?
Yes.
So two other discussions that the Highway Safety Committee took up that were not necessarily on the agenda for requests from the public, but it was as a result of the construction on Main Street and a couple of potential additions and/or modifications to be made from the CMAC plan. Apparently, there has been a couple of occasions, at least brought to my attention, that parking still occurs in front of Town Hall. It would seem that this would be a no-brainer to most folks, that you don't park right in the middle of the travel lane, especially to impede traffic, but there has been a parking space for there for so long, that I think some folks don't realize that it's not prudent to do so. Adding more signs to that particular location, we thought was probably going to just create a sign potpourri situation, and it probably wasn't the best course of action. So we had, we made a thought process to potentially paint no parking right at the base of the location, the sidewalk. So that way, it was pretty indicative to the travel person not to park there, and it didn't require any extra signage, and it wouldn't necessarily require enacting any new ordinance as a result. So that was something that we had taken upon ourselves to recommend. As well as another unintended consequence as a result of what's going on in the North Mast construction, there is currently no parking prohibition under the current ordinance to a certain location from the corner of basically where North Mast and Main Street meet, on that inside corner, out to about 185 feet right now. There's been a need to increase that by about 90 feet, 90 additional feet, because if there is any parking there, they would be out into that travel lane, especially with what's going on right now.
What are those called, Megan? What, the medians?
Oh, the cobble strips?
Correct. So there would only be five, five feet of space for a car to park there. Normal space would require about 10, 11 feet, so the cars would be jutting into the travel lane, coming into town. So the request was to amend that particular no parking ordinance out about another 100 feet, 90 feet, 285 feet, if I remember right, Adam? Does that sound right?
We actually have our numbers back with Roff.
I'm sorry.
No, it was my bad, because we were looking at the email. It's 90 feet now, because it's just right at the corner in front of the property that we own.
Yep.
Right there, and we want to extend it along the church where people are parking in the five-foot shoulder. So it's extending it for 90, another 185, so it's 275 total. So I met with the church today, I met with Angela Vatti, and we were talking about that. She's gonna bring that to the group.
Yeah, there's gonna be a real concern about the parking in front of the church. They've already started talking about losing parking in front of the church, so...
I mean, there was never any defined parking there, and now that there's a raised curb sidewalk there.
I understand there are any defined parking, but they've been parking there for how many years?
Years.
That's a real concern.
Maybe we can negotiate, or meet with them and discuss our plans for one North Mast. I know we're talking about putting something in the budget for 19 to have that demolished, but maybe there's some opportunities.
And is there a way to get from the church street parking to the church? And there's, is there a way to get from the church street parking to the church?
Oh, not yet.
No, you'd have to cross over.
The future church street.
Well, not the future, it's already there. I mean, you've got, what, thirty spaces back there?
Fire station. There's no, there's no crossing yet. There has been some interest expressed by others about a pedestrian connection, but nothing yet.
And when we go forward with the public hearing on this revised ordinance, would it be good to reference a, an address where it starts rather than saying so many feet from an intersection?
Yes, I can reference. It's in front of the church properties pretty much. And it would, it ends right at where the clothing, clothing building is that they have there, where the driveway gets really wide and connects to the next building down. So, it's pretty much all the sidewalk until that opening.
When you talked with somebody from the church recently, what about a funeral? I've seen a hearse right in front of the door and with cars behind it.
Yeah, we talked about that today, actually. We had some ideas, which we're gonna talk to Mike Hillhouse tomorrow. Eric and I were out there today, meeting with her. One of the ideas we had is to possibly take, they have a single in and a single out right now. So, their in is if you're looking at the church on the left side and their out is on the right. And so, we talked about possibly widening their out to an in and out. Because even prior to the project, you kind of take your life in your hands, crossing, looking both ways around a corner, crossing two lanes and going into their entrance in. Now, with the medians, it makes it a little harder. You can still make the movement. So, we talked about that that would become for like funerals and things, it could be used, be open, it wouldn't be closed off. But she specifically mentioned with the no parking on the street and she liked the idea of, okay, that side little road could be used for the hearse's and there's handicap access and everything for them to wheel the casket in and whatnot. And then we would possibly widen their other entrance to provide an in and out. And I think that would be much safer for people to, instead of be coming straight across the two lanes, to turn right or, you know, come down around the corner and take a left in. I definitely think it'd be much safer. She did as well. But she needed to speak to the, a group, I'm not sure what she called the group of people, that would make those decisions. And she knows it needs to be timely, because we're gonna be installing curbing over there soon. But it was definitely something.
I wouldn't be doing anything until we get this handled over there. I just don't feel it's right until we have, I don't wanna make, do something that's gonna stop them from their procedures now.
Well, we, you physically cannot park, you would essentially be in the travel lane if you parked there. Once we put the, we build the project to the approved plan, you're parking in the travel lane. So.
I understand that. But I think what I just said was, I'm not in favor of doing anything in there until we get something ironed out with them. I don't think it's fair.
That's fine. We're in the middle of doing that right now and.
You can start someplace else or do something else. I don't care about it. That's my own feeling. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. But I think we need to work something out with them first.
I'm not clear with what your objective is.
My objective is not to change it right now until we have come up with a plan.
Reducing where the no.
Right.
You're gonna force them to park in Sully's parking lot, which eventually he's gonna say, hey.
I think they have agreements with, I'm not sure if it's with Sully's, but I, I think with the library, Adam. Is it with the library that, do they have any agreements with them? You know, for, because obviously, they have made their park, they have no, almost no parking on site. They have very little outback behind their buildings. So. I don't mind not making a change to the ordinance. I'll tell you that our curbing is lined up, because we're trying to get this road top coated. So, that we're, we don't have an actual date on the curbing install. But we obviously are actively trying to work with them and make a decision quickly with them. So, you know, if the board can leave that to me to work with them and come to an agreeable solution with them, because.
I, I would just hate to, I know you just say, I'll have them call you, but that's not what happens. It happens, they call us and say, you know, what are you doing? And they call you kinds of names and stuff. So, I wanna make sure that we've worked something out with them. So, we can say, we've already worked with the guys, we're doing something to take care of it before we just go and do it.
Absolutely.
That's my.
Yeah, I agree.
I can keep Adam up to date with what's happening or I can shoot the board an email when we've come to an agreement with them on what we might do. But I think that in and out entrances improves the safety, solves that problem, gives them the side for their funeral access. People can still make that movement. We talked about training people to use the new entrance. Possibly, you could cone it off and she said, you know.
That sounds great, but let's just, let's do that, make sure they have that access before we go and shut their access. They're parking off or in the front of the building. Does that make sense?
I understand.
I'm just, I don't know how the rest of the board feels or Alan feels.
You can't just take this all away. They've had it parking there for how many years?
Again, all I'll say is, this isn't, we're not, DPW's not creating a problem all of a sudden. This is a plan that's been approved for years, actually.
Yeah, but the problem just came to surface.
Well, something to look at. Sometimes we do things that aren't right, we have to change them.
And we're trying to come up with a, a solution that'll fix that problem for them.
Megan, for the meeting today, did, she happened to give you an estimated timeframe in which she could get.
She's calling tomorrow. She's hoping, she was going back home, contacted them immediately. We're gonna talk to Mike Hillhouse tomorrow about our idea, see if that causes any problems we weren't thinking of today. And she, she knows she's trying to get ahold of us hopefully tomorrow with an answer.
So, my opinion is that Megan's actively working on it. It seems like they'll come up with a solution soon. I would just request that if a solution isn't agreed to before you're gonna start construction, if you could just come back and let us know. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. Let's, but I just, I don't want, in the meantime, if some, if they need to park a hearse there, what are you gonna do? If we go ahead and do the prod, start the project?
Well, yeah, it sounds like Megan's trying to get it done prior to that, though.
Okay, I'm good. Anything else Chief? That's it for Highway Safety.
Oh, Megan, can I ask another question? Sorry. Well, Chief, the first question I had was the, for the Town Hall no parking. Were you talking about painting on the curb or on the pavement, just on the sidewalk, not on the road?
Yes, ordering a stencil on the pavement.
On the road.
On the road.
And I'm trying to remember how many inches.
I heard sidewalk, so I wasn't sure.
I think they were twelve inch high max, I think, is what it was. Twelve inches high.
So, would there be any requests to put that other places in town where there's now no parking? Like, would that be a permanent fixture or just sort of temporarily till people get adjusted? I mean, because I saw people parking in front of Sully's.
The elephant in the room would be.
Where there's not supposed to be parking this weekend.
That you can enforce anything that there's no adoption of an ordinance for.
Right.
This would probably be more of a deterrent for people to say, geez, that doesn't look like it's a reasonable place to park. And I think it's kind of a stopgap, but I mean, really, to do it correctly, you should probably enact an ordinance, install a sign, another one. But I, I don't think that that's, I don't, I don't think you need.
Habit, we're trying to break.
Yes.
Go ahead, what did you say, Adam?
I was just gonna say, this is more of a habit we're trying to break, I think, with the intermediaries.
Well, people have been parking there for how many years?
Correct.
David? Chief or Megan, would it, rather than having the words, no parking, running parallel to the granite curbing, would a crosshatching of white or yellow lines be just as effective? A little diagonal strip of lines?
We, we did actually, we did actually talk about that. The, the stencil came up as a little more clarity for folks.
I'm hoping to.
Maybe something, we're gonna be trying different things till we can figure it out.
Yeah, I think it's a good jumping off starting point before we go painting the whole lane.
Anything else? Adam?
Mr. Chair, did, on the, on the request for the no parking extension, is the board tabling that item for until later meeting? Or did you wanna schedule public hearings for that piece as well?
I would like to go forward with a public hearing, because I, it appears that they'll have a resolution agreed with, within two to three weeks. And that's when the.
We're still gonna have a chance to vote on it. It's just, you know, we're still, you know, it's still gonna.
By the time we schedule it, are you confident that'll be in October? Okay, great.
So, go ahead and.
You voted on the other, Chief, would you like to vote on that one too? And then you'll, I think we're sure as far as going to public.
Go ahead, Alan. Alan, do you wanna make that motion?
Uh, make a mo, a motion to go ahead and put the, put forward a package for the park, no parking?
Or man.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Go forward to the public hearing. Second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Well, I just have one more, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Megan, just to clarify for the record, if they were to do any sort of extension to the driveway, you would be assisting them with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Possting, seeing none? Okay, next.
Just for clarification, Adam, I know you had tabled the, the first one, the second one. Were okay on this one to go?
Yep.
So, I was approached and I, and I, he's not able to be here tonight. I'm assuming Brian Balky was.
Correct, yep.
So, without speaking for him, he, he and I have been in conversations, as you know, with the possibility of establishment of a second school resource officer for, for the town. He had informed me late last week that he had sought and got approval for funding from the SAU budget for a second SAU, for a second SRO. So, and I know that when we had met previously to discuss this issue, you folks had had some questions regarding that. I know that he has told me that he was gonna avail himself to you folks in case you had any further follow-up. But the information that I received was, it was gonna be a fully funding of an entry-level starting police officer that we would end up selecting from somebody of our current rank to fill that school resource officer void. That being said, we are at full capacity right now, which is great. I would need to start a hiring process to be able to do so, to backfill. I'm probably looking for, and it wouldn't be somebody that would be useful to us for probably about another nine months. The quicker I can get that process going, the easier it would be. But we're in a position now where if we started a second school resource officer around the middle of August, with the hiring process currently going, we wouldn't feel the sting of the absence on the road too badly. So, that's.
So, you're, are you requesting to post for another officer?
I am.
Okay. Just wanted to get it out to what you were trying to say.
I'm, I'm trying to cover as many of the bases of the questions that I think that you folks are probably going to ask me.
Okay, so, and so we hire another officer and during the school vacations and summer vacations, that officer comes on duty at the department?
Yes, in the, so with the current routine that we have with our current SRO, we have plucked her from the school's schedule and stuck her into the patrol schedule. We found that that didn't give the school resource officer a lot of time to be able to decompress from out of the school. So, as you know, we are lucky to have, our current school resource officer is Jackie Pelletier. And I think that if she decided that she wanted to make a lot of money in life, she'd be an event planner, because she's that good at doing things like that. So, we've decided that we are going to encourage her and she's going to take on a community services officer role for the summer. As you know, she already does the National Night Out and she's conducting a couple of the movie nights out. So, we think that she's gonna come up with some pretty fantastic ideas. And I think that she would be able to encourage the second SRO to do so. And I think that we would be able to have officers stay on the road and have some of the more community services ideas that we would like to be able to implement during the summer with the use of, of the school resource officers.
The location of that school resource office, Officer Chief, where would?
Primarily, they'd be at a Mountain View Middle School. But the, the primary role for coverage would always be the high school. So, we are looking at the potential of staggering start times and end times to make sure that we always had.
Have coverage.
Coverage at the high school, because that is the, that, that's the concern, I think, on both fronts.
That's fine. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to allow the police chief to start the process that's needed to hire a new officer for the position for the department, to add the second school resource officer position in the school for the safety of our children and the safety of the people in town.
Second. Any further discussion, questions?
That's with the understanding that the SAU budget is covering the.
Correct.
Right. Increase.
And we are going to be establishing a, we currently have an MOU, but we're gonna be establishing something a little more robust to encompass that that I know that Adam will have his hands on as well. So, that should be done before the end of the summer. Probably before we end up hiring somebody.
Anything else?
Last time we discussed this, we had some, oh, I had some questions about the increase in the SAU's budget for the specialized counselor that they hired last year. I understand that this, they have different jobs and different titles, but we talked about the, you know, how that was impacting kind of what was going on in the school and then the need, more specific detail of what this resource officer would be doing. So, not that the two are connected, but I still would like to talk to Brian at some point about how that change has impacted the school and kind of what this would mean. I'm great, I'm good with hiring it, because I understand the need, but I still wanna talk about the past staffing adjustment they had last year with that intention. That's it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Possting, seeing none? Passes.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Megan?
Megan? Are you ready or, we're running a little ahead, you're about fifteen minutes ahead, but.
I wanna let them know that you made a motion, because they were here for your highway safety.
Do they know that?
Lenny, I just wanted to let you guys know, they made a motion on the Highway Safety Committee recommendation. So, did you still wanna stay for the next public comment or they've, they've approved?
We approved, we, we did approve the change.
I just, I didn't wanna make them wait, so.
You got us interested now.
Okay. Good evening. Alright, so I just wanted to give you guys some updates on our construction projects going on around town. So, with the village rebuild project, last week DPW is working with Padra Earth Products to get that new town common fountain in. So, it is now functional. There's a little bit of work remaining over there, some brick work to the right of it and also some electrical work that needs to be put into a box and buried behind it. We also finished installing the new streetlights. The internal wiring needs to be done in each of them now. And then, once we do that this week, we will then call East Coast Signal to do the final connection in the controller cabinet. And then, they will be working. And I believe they're gonna be on a, some kind of timer as well. And I believe the fountain will be on a timer when the electrical work is done as well also. So, let's see what else. I've been hearing a lot of positive comments, which is nice, on the lights in the fountain. DPW started prepping the landscape areas with Loam out here. We have Faulkner's coming in on Thursday. We met them today to do a quick little pre-con. They're putting in our plantings, some street trees out there, so that's getting done this week. We tentatively have a schedule for top coating of sidewalks this week with Continental, but every time it rains in a week that you're scheduled, it messes them up. So, we'll see. But we were scheduled for Wednesday, so hopefully, they'll still be here this week for that. Next, either this week or next week, we'll be installing the matching black metal benches and barrels. Those will be coming out soon. And some people saw that we've cut the pavement over at the Elm Street intersection for the mountable cobble median. So, just to try and help answer, I know there were some questions on Facebook. I tried to post the links to the old stuff as suggested by Kelly, just to remind people. But over there, just for the public, there are gonna be three mountable islands. So, the finished product will be a one and a half inch high beveled curb cobble strip. It's really just a visual for cars to stay where they're supposed to go. But the whole, all of the things being installed will be completely mountable by trucks, because obviously, Route thirteen, one fourteen, we have massive truck movement. With that being said, we will have to have a temporary truck detour during install. So, we're anxiously waiting for an install date on our curbing, because when I know that, we will release a press release. Probably, I'm guessing, maybe like a week truck detour, because you have to install the curb, let that set, get the cobble guy right behind them, two separate people unfortunately. So, we have to try and get them to come at the same time, get those cobbles in, and then, you know, we'll pave it back in. So, I'm guessing a week of a temporary truck detour. So, we're working on a detour plan, you know, with all, we have all kinds of signage from when we had to do it before. So, we're hoping to reuse our signs and we'll get that all together and put that out as a public notice. And let's see. And that's it. And we'll continue to work on miscellaneous punch list items out here. So, again, the goal is, we're trying to have everything done and out of everybody's way by Old Home Day. And then, we'll start moving around the corner onto North Mast Road. But I really wanted this finished, done, no cones and barrels, before we go over and, and work on phase three.
Mark's got a question.
Megan, the truck detour, how will that affect fire apparatus and our emergency vehicles getting around? Will that?
So, the movement that's gonna be difficult is when you come down High Street to turn right. You would probably be forced straight, turn around at the one that's finished and come back down and around. If you are, you're coming out of Church Street taking a left, you can go up high, you can go left and around. The only one that it might affect you on is the Elm Street piece, the little Elm Street, it's like a couple of feet wide. So, that one could affect you. So. So, we'll have to talk about that one and if you guys would go around there. You know what I mean? And literally, it's, you know, just this short period of, and if there's, if there's going to be any kind of gap between curbing and cobble guy, if we have to, we'll backfill it all with gravel, okay? So, it can be traversed and then we'll open it back up. I mean, it's a pain, but if there's a delay between contractors, then that's what we'll have to do.
Alan?
I had, I had a quick question. Those are both these areas on Elm Street, coming off High Street, back on the Mass Road, they're all going to be drivable. In other words.
In the finished product, yes.
Finished product, these aren't going to be high.
They're going to be very similar to the cobble aprons around, around about.
I just had about a thousand phone calls and I says, I don't, I gotta field it all and I was looking at the plan tonight.
No, and you know, I think one of the confusions was they saw cut it and they stuck barrels there. So, I had Eric go out today and remove the barrels because the trucks need to keep making the movements right now.
Have you noticed the hay hanging on the pole over there?
The what?
Hay hanging on the pole coming up High Street. The guy came down High Street, couldn't make the turn, the hay was just pressed right on the pole.
So, we took the, we took the barrels out of the way. Again, our guys on Friday probably just thought to put them up. But we took them out of the way so that it can continue to be used properly. And then, like I said, we'll put out a formal public notice when we have to create a detour.
Thanks.
Okay.
The end project?
Yeah, I got another one in between, if that's okay. So, Shirley Hill Park and Shirley Hill Ave Water Main Project. I got an announcement from the Village Water Precinct. I don't know if you want me to read it or not. It was sent to all the neighbors in that neighborhood. I posted it on Facebook as well tonight. I'm happy to read it if you would like. But this is a two-year project for that neighborhood. Phase one is two thousand linear feet of water main hydrants and some curb stops. And I believe the work is expected to start around July ninth. Any questions related to that project should be directed to the Grass, sorry, the Goffstown Village Water Precinct at four nine seven three six two one. But I just wanted to make mention that that project is starting up soon.
Would you like me to put a posting on our town Facebook page for that as well?
Yes.
Yes, Megan, Lee Menick also notified me because they're trenching across where the rail trail will be.
Okay.
And what I did was I went out and flagged all of the various boundary monuments.
Oh, okay.
So, they, they don't dig those up.
Good idea. Alright. And lastly is our Uncommunica Dam Project. So, last week, they were working on excavating the embankment area, removing the concrete wall. They were also excavating for the pipe outlet, the head wall, the spillway. And they were working on removing unsuitables and replacing it with new material. One thing that happened last week is during one of the visits from DES, one of the dam bureau representatives, they came out and saw that the test pits that they were excavating to expose the existing wall that's in the ground that has, you know, tipped over the one we're replacing. So, we were originally only going to go down a certain distance. The design was to cut it off. Like, the thought was they didn't know how deep it went and they were only going to go down a certain distance and cut it. Well, the problem was when they got down there and started looking at it, it was crumbling apart. And it wasn't, they were hoping it was more the upper part that was unstable, but the whole thing was very unstable. So, DES suggested that we were going to need to remove the whole wall. So, they removed the portion per plan. DS came back, I believe, and they looked at it again now that they were lower. And they said, yes, that the whole concrete wall has to come out. So, that is beyond the scope of work that they were hired to do. So, we also talked to the design engineer who concurred with DS's recommendation and the construction engineer. So, everyone is on the same page that needs to be removed. But unfortunately, it means a, a change order for the project. So, right now, the current work that they've done, which is removing it all, is around nine thousand dollars. And the part that isn't completed yet is now we're trying to figure out what material to put back because there's, there's engineered materials going in. There's, you know, onsite embankment material, there's sand filter material, there's these different materials. And we need to figure out which material is going in. And one of the comments made last week of what material would go in, Busby's saying, well, that might cause a different problem. So, everyone's putting their heads together. We're coming up with a solution on that portion. That would be another thirty five hundred dollars approximately. So, we're looking at twelve thousand five hundred for the additional work. The money for this would come out of our road plan because these, the project scope had a, that one was, was that one a special article or it was just a CIP approved project for a set amount of money? So, we do not have additional funds in a line for that project. So, our two roads that we're reducing some of the scope on are Elm Street and St. Ays. Those are kind of Band-Aid shims that we're putting to buy time and keep the roads in, you know, decent condition, the highly traveled roads until we can completely rebuild them. So, we've cut back and we're focusing on the worst areas on those roads instead of overlaying, you know, the whole thing. So, that savings would go toward this.
So, it confused me a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
The first nine thousand, that was.
So, that is to remove all the embankment, let me just say I have the change order right here.
That's, was not included in the original.
Oh, yes. So, they, they had a scope to go, I don't know how deep down, let's say six feet down. And now, they had to go like twelve feet down or something. It was a lot further. They were supposed to go down and slice off and cut the concrete core wall. But it was too deteriorated and it needs to be removed.
Twelve five.
Yes, yep. And just to let you know, so the reasons they wanted to remove it is reducing the possibility of seepage pathways in, in the embankment, in the new dam embankment, and putting in a proper engineered filter material. So, yes, the change order just came in tonight, so we obviously have to review this, make sure it's all acceptable and then work out the other part of it, which, with all parties, on what material we're putting back in there. So, that, I just wanted to give you that update on that project as well.
We don't have an option on that, it's going to be done.
Really, we don't. It's, you know, DES is saying it needs to be done and it's a safety thing. And here you are, taking, you know, an old dam out and you don't want to leave a piece of it in that's going to cause seepage problems in your new dam. So, it's necessary. That's all I have.
Alright.
Megan, since the last board, have I seen work at Westlon Cemetery?
Oh, yes, that, yeah, Westlon Cemetery. So, over there, this project for this year, off the top of my head, I want to say we had fifty seven thousand dollars to finish all the work over there, which included landscaping. And some of the landscaping was scheduled for fall and they couldn't get to it. So, some of that work was encumbered over. So, we did that work and the spring work. So, we got all the trees in over there. We also went out to bid and hopefully mid-July, we're getting the walkways put in in the center. We're also working with a landscape architect on a planting plan for the cremation garden in the center. DPW also had someone come in and cut all the trees, the, the large evergreens there. And we've been there to remove all the stumps as well. Jason is also working on putting new irrigation lines in to expand the irrigation to water all this stuff. So, that project's, it's going well.
Thank you.
Okay, good question, Megan.
Go ahead.
Go back to the dam real quick, Megan. What was our original cost going to be on the dam?
On the whole project? I do.
Project, and I want to know what our original would be.
Alright, I wrote that down. Two hundred sixty seven thousand, two fifty. That is, two sixty seven, two fifty. That is Busby's contract. So, that doesn't include the.
Originally, we were at what to start at that. We got, we ended up, we had a boost in this, didn't we? We were started, we were at one ninety or something, weren't we? One ninety five and then we.
I don't remember those numbers, but yes, you're right. We had to.
Yeah, the bid came in, the bid came in over what was budgeted.
Yes, maybe two fifty even, but then, when you take the two sixty seven plus, we're required by DES to have part-time inspection by a certified, you know, structural person.
Right, I was just curious, why don't you push it up because there were twelve thousand five and we're now over that, right?
Whatever our total budget was, and I'm sorry, I just wrote the contract amount down.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I might have, hold on.
Doesn't make much difference though, we're required to do it.
I just was curious, I, I'm just curious what we're at.
Yeah, I was just seeing if I had.
Money's got to come from someplace.
In my.
Got it. I got it, yeah, I got it.
My budget printout, I might have it.
Thanks. That's alright, if you don't have it, I was just curious.
Yeah, I was just looking to see if I had it. Uncommunica Dam, right here. So, this says, oh, that can't be it because it says two hundred. Incumbre says two hundred. So, yeah, I would have to look, Alan, and get back to you.
That's fine, that's fine. Just curious.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, can I ask her for one more update? No, go on. The recycling spot audit? Mm-hmm. I heard lots of buzz that the interns were out and about. Yes. And I just wanted to give Adam and Megan kudos for helping with those links. So, I was trying to send along information from the website and there was a link that was broken and they got on that right away and fixed that. So, thank you for doing that. How did the recycling? They're still doing them. They started last week, so they're keeping track of everything. I know I asked them, I think at lunch on Thursday, how it went. And I'm trying to remember how many barrels they tagged, if it was like thirty that day, which, you know, I think we do a thousand stops a day. Does that sound about right? Thousand stops a day? What you expected or was it shockingly less? Well, so here, I'll be honest, on the first day they went out, they were being very strict about what is in the allowed. And they were tagging too much. And we said, look, you're going to end up tagging seventy five percent of the town. Let's focus on, I mean, really, you know what I mean? Because you're not supposed to bag stuff, you know, there's just some things that are changing a little. So, we focused on the big issues, the yard waste, hoses, electronics, big things, you know. There was a picture someone sent me of a giant ironing board sticking out of someone's, you know. So, I mean, just things, things like that. We're focusing on the bigger stuff. And then, I think what we're going to do is later do a whole separate campaign on no bagging recyclables when we kind of reel in these bigger issues. So, we pulled back a little because I was afraid if we tagged way too many people, we're going to, you know, cause a lot of uproar. So, I think we need to kind of take baby steps, you know, where we're trying to tag the bigger violators. And I, I don't want to, you know, it's not, I know some people were upset, you know, because we're tagging barrels. I tried to get some information out. You know, some people called us and we'll go out and meet with them and talk about what was or, you know, what the issue was. So, I mean, we've been working through each and every call we've gotten, which really, we haven't gotten that many calls. I think some people hopefully got the tag, removed the violation, can wait a week and, and then put their stuff out. Maybe some people decided to come to the transfer station and dump it. And if there was a real issue, then some people contacted us and we're working with those people one-on-one.
The Budget Committee meeting, one of the people said they heard we were doing it. She took a recycling bit back and went through it again.
So, yeah, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take time. We're not going to be able to fix this problem right away, so.
What's happening with our, with our recycling anyway? I'm just curious, what the recycling is that? I mean, we were, we were talking about the recycling was kind of going to go away. Was, like, we were going away, but we weren't going to be able to get rid of this stuff.
Right now, we, we have a contract with Casella and we send it down to Charlestown, which is where it is.
I know, but I mean.
Yep, that's where it's still going.
If that door shuts on us, what are we going to do?
They're not shutting the door on us, they're just raising the prices on us.
Well, at that point, does it become more for us to throw everything away and not bother to recycle?
That's stuff that we're working on with Casella. So, in at one of the board meetings, I don't know if you were at or not.
He wasn't here that, for that meeting.
Okay, we've talked about that at a, at, with the board as a whole. And they allowed me to work with Casella on, on making any adjustments. But nothing is changing for residents. You still have a blue bin, you still have a trash bin. And you're, it's mandatory recycling town. And we're doing that because as quickly and volatile as the recycling market is and tanked, it could rebound. I just talked to Casella and new things are happening because of this national crisis, things are changing. So, we don't want to change anything for our residents.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just curious of what we, what they, what they were after, so.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely hurting our solid waste budget for sure. It was, it's hurting every municipality. Well, it definitely started a buzz and thank you for going out of your way the other day. For me, Megan worked pretty diligently with Kathy Ball to get some special flyers over to the residents at the meeting house because they all throw their recycling in one bin together. So, they had asked for some additional flyers and Kathy and Megan went out of their way to make that happen for them. Very excited, so thank you again for doing that. Awesome.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Adam, you're next.
Okay, committee meeting schedule. Tuesday, tomorrow, six P.M., Sewer Commission, room one oh six.
Gotcha.
Wednesday, the twenty seventh, six thirty, HDC and Grassmere.
Yep.
Also, Wednesday, seven P.M., Conservation, right here, one oh six.
I'll be there.
Thursday, the twenty eighth, seven P.M., Planning Board, one oh six.
That's mine.
And July fourth, Wednesday is a holiday.
Everybody can take that.
You can have that, Peter, good job.
Peter, Joe Janis, only one.
Only got a, yeah, good.
Town Hall's closed.
At Town Hall, we close all day. On the consensus folders tonight, we got a few things. Proclamations, as you read earlier, for Boss Post Kane and Glenn Y Day. We have a right to inter for Westlon Cemetery, section nineteen ninety-two, lot one seven four B. Got a couple of event permits, one for the Police Department. Movie Under the Stars at Barnard Park on the nineteenth of July and at Roy Park on the second of August. We have one for the Goffstown Main Street Program, Uncommon Art on the Common, August fourth. A batch of July twenty eighteen pay changes for the MRI matrix and any contract changes. And then, I also slipped in one in front of the Chairman for an employee status form for our seasonal tax collector assistant that you approved at the last non-public session.
Motion to approve the consensus folders presented.
Second.
Any discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Posed, standing, seeing none? Motion passes.
Okay, for assessors' recommendations tonight, we've got a report of timber cut, certifications of yield taxes and timber tax warrant, which has been recommended for map seven, lot twenty-seven, and map three, lot twenty-seven. And we have a service-connected disability tax credit, which was conditionally recommended as long as you agree with the thought process behind that, map thirty-five, lot fifteen.
Motion to approve the assessors' recommendation just read to us.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained, seeing none?
Okay, also in the signature folder tonight, you saw the Barton Lot Line Adjustment Deed. As previously discussed at a couple of meetings, that was for the Lot Line Adjustment between the Town Parcel and the Barton Parcel, maps one, lot thirty-five and thirty-five A. Planning Board did approve that proposal for the Lot Line Adjustment. So, the finalized deeds must be recorded. Got a copy of the deed to the town, if you need to see that. But the copy that you saw in there was the deed from the town for the town's portion.
Motion to accept the Lot Line Adjustment Deed, Barton Property.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed, standing, seeing none? Move on.
Okay, and Road Tracking Form is also in the signature folder. This one's for a sidewalk easement. A developer of a two-lot subdivision on Mass Road and Larch Street, map sixteen, lot one seventy-two. Would like to grant a hundred and fifteen foot long sidewalk easement to the town.
Motion accept. Second.
And authorize the Chair to sign?
Absolutely. Thank you, David.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, posed. Standing.
Uh, we have some committee appointments and recommendations tonight. One, Mark Collins for the Building Board of Appeals, which would expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I don't know if you want to take them all separately. We've got a couple of that. Uh, we've got three that would be board-appointed. So, Mark Collins, Building Board of Appeals. Stephen Langley, Economic Development Council Regular Member, expiring three thirty-one eighteen. And Sybil Moore in Economic Development Council Alternate, also expiring three thirty-one eighteen. I'm sorry, three thirty-one twenty-one. Thank you.
Motion, they do need a motion then on those three. Yeah, motion to approve the three board-appointed committee appointments just read to us.
Second.
Sorry, Greg.
It's alright.
Motion by David, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed, seeing none?
Okay, and then, we have one recommendation to appoint Joanne Duffy to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, would expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, as an alternate member.
Motion to accept Joanne Duffy to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Who is our representative, Phil? Are you?
I am one of the three.
Who else?
Hank Boyle. And, you know, I honestly thought it was Joanne. You mentioned alternate.
Yeah, she's listed as an alternate on the, on the app.
Barbara Griffin. I just care, I.
Can't keep trying to get it all.
I can't remember who's what.
Okay, uh, also in the F Y I folder for you this week, we had the, um, policy solicitation for the New Hampshire Municipal Association to see if you would like to weigh in on any of their policies or submit any of your own for discussion at their next meeting.
Okay. I guess I don't have any recommendations.
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on, Alan. They'll have at least twenty or thirty recommendations from municipalities all across the state.
Uh, item H, we have, as previously mentioned, we've got seventeen thousand five hundred in impact fees the Board previously authorized for the Station Eighteen Fire Station project that were not spent. Treasurer would like to get these funds back into the impact fee subaccounts from which they came, but we also need to assign some interest. He submitted a memo for your packets there, uh, with a breakdown of those funds and interest. Total amount going back out of the Capital Project Fund would be fourteen thousand eight zero two and forty-nine cents. Uh, he would like to take the remaining funds in that account, which is one thousand eighty-six dollars and fifty-five cents, and reclassify it as interest on investment revenue. Uh, so as, as we mentioned earlier, if you wanna then turn around and apply these to that Station Nineteen Conversion Project, I think the best thing to do would be take this vote and then you could take a vote to expend whatever you'd like from impact fees.
I have a question, the way this is written though. This says the Board authorized seventeen thousand five hundred impact fee, impact fees for the Station Eighteen Fire Station project that were not spent. We spent part of the seventeen five.
Correct, should be full, not fully spent, I think is proper.
Right, yeah, because it's, the way that reads is we didn't spend seventeen, the seventeen five.
Didn't spend at all.
So we wanna take a motion, I need a motion to take the fourteen eight oh two forty-nine and additional thousand eighty-six fifty-five.
Mr. Chair, and I'm gonna, before you do list that, I'm gonna actually walk that back. I think the typo is actually in my number, should've been fourteen thousand seven fifty, not seventeen five.
What was it?
Fourteen thousand seven fifty was the original vote that you took to spend.
Fourteen thousand seven.
Not seventeen five.
Does that impact, Adam, this letter on eight H, on the second page, it says fourteen thousand eight oh two forty-nine?
So the, so that actually now makes more sense than the seventeen five would have from my T A report. So disregard anything I wrote on the T A report, Derek's number's correct. So fourteen seven fifty was the original vote, fourteen eight oh two forty-nine would be what that would be in interest. You know, that, that.
Okay, yeah.
So. So you got a current balance back here of fifteen eight eighty-nine oh four, correct?
That's correct, so the additional one thousand eighty-six fifty-five.
Would get us to fifteen eight.
Would like to go back into the interest on investment.
Okay.
Somebody making that motion, Alan?
I'll make that motion to accept that.
I thought you did.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's get the numbers straight, that's all.
No kidding, huh?
So how much dollars are we talking about?
Yeah, what do we, what do we actually?
The fourteen eight oh two, or with a thousand?
So you just voted fourteen eight oh two forty-nine from the fund back into the, uh, impact fee accounts.
Plus the thousand eighty-six.
Now they're made whole. And then a thousand eighty-six fifty-five is going from that same account, but not to impact fees, it's going to interest on investment.
So the balance will be fifteen eight eighty-nine oh four?
No, 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 we're gonna put fourteen, we're putting fourteen eight oh two forty-nine and back into the impact fees. The interest goes back, goes into the Investment Revenue Fund.
Okay.
Some of the, you're right.
Okay, alright, alright, so the interest is going back in, I got you.
The interest that accrued from the rest of the bond.
The other way.
Is that in the account, is the part that's gonna go into interest and investments. The interest on the impact fees is going back with the impact fees, that's why it's a different number.
Which isn't a lot of money.
Uh, so this will be the time, if you'd like to turn around and apply impact fees to.
Well, did we, did we get the motion, we made a motion, but did we vote on it? Yeah.
I did record it.
You did, okay, alright.
I'm gonna go ahead of myself, bud.
Oh.
So now you wanna make a motion to do what, you wanna send it, Peter, make that motion?
If we, well, we, if we don't use it, we lose it.
Yeah.
Impact fees, we've got a couple of years left, but we might as well use it. My concern is, there's still twenty thousand in those lines that, um, I'm assuming we won't spend if we use this money, just pay for that. Would that be accurate, Chief?
Unless something happens, there's not.
The budgeted money from the.
The stuff, the money, it's, it's budgeted.
Right.
Thank you. So, yeah, I would, if you want, I'll make the motion, sorry to make the motion that we use the fourteen eight oh two forty-nine to offset the nineteen, yeah, the one ninety.
Nineteen thousand nine eleven.
Nine eleven. Nineteen thousand nine eleven.
Right, come here, for the, you know, hookups and gas. Second.
Fund the fire department, change over.
So it's split funded with fourteen eight oh two forty-nine from impact fees?
Correct.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, standing, seeing none. Motion passes.
Okay, uh, I, um, mentioned it briefly at the last meeting, um, don't have a, a ton of info for you yet other than maybe if we wanna just talk about it, special event permits. Currently, the process and the application form, it can lead to some confusion for applicants.
Did you skip over the school here?
Oh, yes, sorry, thanks, Alan.
There you go.
Uh, second item under H, we do have a similar situation with a school where they have, uh, some impact fees that were, uh, approved. Um, they'd like to release, uh, the school board voted to release three hundred and seventy-three thousand nine eighty-six seventy in impact fees to install the modular classrooms on February twenty-seventh of seventeen. Right now, in that account, there's a balance of forty-seven thousand five dollars and forty-five cents. Treasurer recommends transfer of these funds back into the impact fee subaccounts.
Again, do we have any idea on timing on that? How does that work? You're only using a portion of it, what portion have you used?
Not sure.
Was it pre-budgeted for those, I can't remember.
Or released?
No, no, what, with the impact fee, you only have so much time before you have to spend it.
No, no, I meant if you modular.
What, I'm sorry, what's the expiration on there?
But no, what I'm saying is when you use that amount, three hundred and seventy-three thousand.
We do the same, we chew away at the, uh, the subaccounts that would be repopulated in this count, in this case.
No, who keeps track of that?
So Treasurer has a impact fee, uh, ledger.
Okay.
So, um, so you can tell you that.
I'm just saying, if we got something that's gonna expire, we need to let the school know.
I didn't see any on the last, he sends out it with a budget, um, quarterly, um, um, and impact fee account status, and I don't remember any that were in danger of, you know, being lost.
But if we returned some money, that. Alright, so, just as long as you don't have to give it back. Go ahead.
Motion to transfer forty-seven thousand, yeah, five dollars and forty-five cents from the school district, uh, into the school impact fees.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, standing, motion passes.
Okay. Alright, so back to special event permits. Um, some of the confusion issues, I guess, that come up, uh, are the, the ordinance is written in a way that it says any open air meetings that, but a public way, which is a lot of property. Um, and it doesn't get very specific if, you know, we have an event at a restaurant, maybe that doesn't have a site plan, for example, and wants to have an outdoor, a small outdoor gathering as part of their, a promotion. Technically, since they have no site plan to do an outdoor dining or alcohol sales, we have to treat it like a special event and it butts a public way, so they now fall under the special event permit. A, there's a lot of folks don't even know they would need one in something like this. And B, um, it seems a little silly for a small, small gathering, but the, the ordinance is pretty vague. I think part of the reason the ordinance is vague is we wanted to catch the, the, the tent permit applications that might be needed, or the assembly permit stuff that, you know, if you have a gathering of fifty people or more, that kind of thing.
And also the fire permits, too.
And, and regular fire permits, for sure. Um, I think we can probably be a little more specific and, and taking just a quick look at some other towns. Um, it looks like others have the cutoff of actually using public space, so either the road itself, sidewalk and/or town land, like a parking lot or a park. And then they just try to do a better job with outreach for those bigger events that, you know, somebody's gonna have a graduation party with three tents and two vans and, uh, directing traffic. You just, you know that that's an event, but, um, you know, maybe a cutoff for the number of people would be something that we can do. So I think, uh, I think you already gave me this, uh, kinda tentatively last meeting, but, um, would you like to draft maybe a proposed revision for the next meeting? And then we can talk about whether you wanna take it to a public hearing?
Sure.
The other, the other kinda thing that, uh, comes up is, um, the short notice stuff that, you know, the, the way the ordinance is written out allows the Board to waive requirements for these if, if there's less than the time required. Um, but, but occasionally, and fairly often, we'll get a, uh, you know, Wednesday or Thursday, um, oh, something's gonna happen this weekend, there's not time. And, and I think probably not a reason to have an emergency board meeting, just to give approval for an event permit. So maybe we can talk about some of the, um, delegation, if it's a smaller type of event, that's not a traffic impact or, you know, do you wanna delegate some of that to get some of these through quickly, so.
I can remember, Mark, you do probably too, and Alan, somebody had scheduled a charity car wash at.
Yes.
Up at the.
Church.
At the church.
Yeah.
Somebody went and said, you don't have a permit to do that. So, and it had been advertised and everything, so we called it an emergency meeting, we came in and voted.
We did, we signed the permit.
Yeah. But, I mean, you know, that's the kinda stuff that happens if we don't have anything.
The, um, the other item that, uh, came up, uh, Chief O'Brien's let me know that they've changed the state law regarding fireworks in a few cases, so, um, maybe, uh, at a future meeting, we can discuss some of that, see if we can look at the local ordinance and how that might impact.
Well.
Well, we'll need, the chief will come in with the updates and the changes.
Yeah, it's a little late now, uh, fire.
Right.
You know, nothing we can do.
No, but.
But to add to the ordinance, is that what, it's for special events?
Where does the special events go? Didn't we, didn't we take a vote to not, uh, whether it was a fee charged for these, for these people who are trying to raise money for, you know, car wash or whatever else?
Yeah, I think we did, uh.
Didn't we, were they, correct?
Uh, something like that, or we, we take it on an individual basis or something.
Yep, nonprofits are carved out.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, I'll try to get a, uh, back to the next meeting here.
Alright.
Um, in your packets, you've got, uh, some of the departmental breakdowns for fees under tab eight J. Not a ton of, uh, requested changes, but if you just wanna have me run down each department, what we've got. Oh, and there's the school impact fee balance, uh, let's see.
It was the balances, but it didn't have expiration dates for any of them.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Okay. Uh, let's see, um, so for admin, uh, recommending adding a seventy-nine E tax incentive. So we've got a, um, item on the Action Matrix to get the revised kinda decision checklist and, and application up to you, but to one of the items on there is a, is a fee. Um, so I, I'm recommending a fifty dollar fee, and that kinda brings it in line with a couple of our, um, um, permit fees that have to go around to multiple departments for people to check on. Um, Public Works. We've got. Some changes recommended to burials. Um, if you look on the second page, cemetery lot five by five from two hundred to two fifty. Foundation install actually going to a three hundred dollar minimum, fifteen dollars per cubic foot. Ten by three and a half lot from four hundred to five hundred dollars, and a ten by seven from eight hundred to a thousand dollars. More to bring it in line with the actual time involved and the, the labor costs, um, to get those done. Uh, Megan did bring those through the Cemetery Commission. Megan, I've lost my highlighting, am I missing anything else from your, uh?
Oh, but you didn't, um. So related to the numbers you just gave, actually, Kathy said those, that is what we have been charging for years. We're not sure where the two thousand and thirteen column in your spreadsheet came from. We're not sure that those were even. My understanding is the ones that I gave you is what we have been charging for several years already. So whether or not that got properly, um, put through this process or not, I guess, just to wanna be clear to the Board, we're not changing the prices to the people, I'm just, we went through and I had Kathy write down all the prices we're charging, you know, for everything, and we didn't know where your and our numbers came from, yeah.
Sue had done a bunch of work before she left, and this was her last breakdown of, okay, what votes were actually taken to back up the fees that we've been charging, apparently.
And there were notes that Carl, like, was doing stuff with her on that, so we're just not sure where that came from. But those prices are the same, but I do have several changes, if you need me to walk you through them.
But I, I think the point she was trying to make with this document that we would need tonight is that, uh, for a public hearing, doesn't look like we ever took a vote to establish those fees that we've been charging, so we would need to do that at some point.
That's fine.
Even if.
Can we, uh, is there a possibility that, and this chart's kinda tough to follow, to be honest with you?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we put it in a different format and then be able to go through and, and.
Show us what the increase, increase.
Well, yeah, no, and, and do, do it in sections, like, you know.
I just used what Adam gave, I didn't know.
No, that's fine.
I just stuck it in the column, but yeah, I could.
Like I said, I just took it from Sue, I figured this is what you would see every year.
Yeah, no.
She was here, so I don't know if it does or not.
This is new.
Um, so would you like to only see the change, changes on the fees?
No, we have to, you said there's some stuff that's never gotten voted on.
Right.
So let's just do a whole fee thing, a whole fee schedule.
Put a vote on it.
Adopt a fee schedule.
You gotta put that to public notice.
Maybe you put all the fees in one thing and put an asterisk on any that are changing, and then if they want.
I can get rid of that.
And we can just do, do, vote on all the fees.
You're saying you don't wanna see the. Two thousand four through the seventeen column on here is extra information you don't wanna see. You just wanna see the proposed fees.
Yeah, and then we could just vote on one thing, and for the, you know, we should do all, all of our fees.
Yes.
And we'll just adopt the whole thing. That make sense? That way we'll, we're covered.
Do it once and.
Yeah. Two thousand eighteen, you know, whenever, August, whatever, September, just do it all one time, bang. That sound?
Sounds good, and if we talk about it publicly, I think it'll make it easier for people to, they have any.
Ask him when he makes the changes, to highlight the changes in yellow or whatever.
Yeah, I think that we lost our color highlighting on this, too, because that makes it even tougher for you kids.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be much easier.
Easier to pick off.
Yep.
Yeah, so several of ours have been updated because the last time they were updated was ten years ago, and we're actually paying more than some of the fees that we're collecting, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we should just do the whole thing over again to adopt one fee schedule for.
Every department on one.
Every department just get it done. That way, you can take the blame for it, or. I'm blaming it on the fire department anyway, that's the best department to blame stuff on.
She gave you a thumbs up.
Chief said, oh, yeah, and Rob seconded it, so.
Attaboy. Let's just skip by that, then we got away.
Hold on to those.
Okay. Um. Just wanna make sure there wasn't. The only thing that's a little time sensitive, uh, now would be the credit card usage fees, but, um, so folks at the end, I think, of July are going to, or starting in July, are gonna get their notifications that they can start using the one check, or we're switching to the one check system for their registrations.
Yep.
If they haven't already even received them. Um, so, credit cards will be able to be online, I think, for August payments. We just didn't know what to set.
Well, we can take that, we can take that piece at that time and say, okay, this is what the fee is, and then when we do the whole chart, the fee's gonna be there.
The only thing with that is the public hearing, so, you know, the schedule required just for that one fee is, you know, a couple, a couple sessions plus a vote, so.
Do it, we gotta.
I think we'll just have no, no user fee for that first couple of weeks, so that may be if we're not ready yet.
Okay.
Adam, would you be able to add this to the matrix, too, that we have? The police department, the additional fees?
That'll be all one, we will.
Or is this separate from?
So each, so the way, the way the file that I had, that the research had been done to this point was done, it was broken out by department, so each of these pages, or two pages in some cases, is that department's history of fees, how they came to be, did we have a vote ever on that fee, and if not?
Mine, I wanna put all the fees on one document.
Mm-hmm.
Police, fire.
Yeah, so this one, too, just format it all the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we can take a look at it and adopt it.
Uh, and then I've got a K, an update, uh, as of today, I believe, the, uh, we've done a theory to practice. We can broadcast, bless you, from, uh, Station Eighteen with a new meeting room, uh, which is a good thing because I think, as I told you at the last meeting, at room one oh seven, uh, the, the, um, broadcast equipment's not actually working, it's, uh, the older equipment has failed, so, um, we are prepared to make the shift with I T office moving downstairs to take room one oh seven, and we can broadcast from, from A T.
There you go.
The Board's prepared to do that, I think the last, uh, discussion it was, let's wait and make sure that we can do it before we send anybody into a new office.
And they have done the test?
Yes.
Successfully?
Yeah, I watched it on YouTube myself, two and, two minutes and thirty-three seconds of, uh, dead room, but it worked.
Well, it's no different than twelve pages of zeros for the Budget Committee.
Right. Uh, so with your permission, I'll get the, get the, um, I T department, uh, uh, structure to move downstairs here, and then we'll, um, uh, start working with, with finance and land use to figure out how we're gonna shift things upstairs. But first, the domino to fall with that, across the whole.
Anything else?
That's it for me.
New business, we talked about curb side collection and sewer cleaning service?
Uh, that was from Slickman Brown.
Yes, I was, I was curious, I wanted to find out, that, that was, thought we should took a look at that, uh, Revactor Truck, do we use it? I don't know how much we use it, yearly, three months, four months, out of the year, five months, maybe? What at rate, what's costing us? Here.
I thought that thing is using all the time.
Well, you don't use it a lot of time much. And we do, I'm, I'm just.
Megan can give us, uh, hours that we're using that and what we're using.
Um, so I just heard about this kinda last minute, so I gathered what info I had already, and if you need me to gather more, I'm happy to gather more.
Why don't, why don't, in all fairness.
Yeah, I did, I did.
In all fairness, why don't we let you get the comprehensive, some comprehensive numbers?
Well, I guess I just.
And come back with us next time.
Okay, I just wanna know how much you want me doing this, 'cause my understanding is this has been looked at in great detail, several, I found spreadsheets of curbside collection, comparison of hauling privately versus the town doing it, with a range of sixty-five thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand savings when the town did it. And that was using our driver costs and everything, and our equipment deterioration, you know, and stuff like that, so I can update these spreadsheets if need be, but I know this has been talked about. I'd have to figure out what year, this was dated two thousand sixteen. I could look in Slickman Minutes, but.
I would, I would think two years, a two-year thing would be fine, I mean, just.
Yeah.
Pass that on to us.
Just the old stuff I have, or?
Old stuff is two years old?
Uh, two thousand sixteen was what the spreadsheet looked like it was from.
Two years old. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's what the date was on it. I don't know if this was yours, or this was what, it had trash, solid waste, it was when we were trying to, um, do a new contract with, um, either Cassell or Waste Management, so we were looking at all these things, and it did have private numbers on there.
Don't you pass, don't you get a couple of that?
Okay, so I'll forward that to him, and then, again, um, not having a lot of time, but a little bit of info I got, um, if you want, is, um, we do use that truck, um, the VAC on quite a bit. So our construction season pretty much runs from April to November, and we clean, uh, over forty thousand linear feet of sewer every year, two hundred and fifty sewer manholes. We clean, um, fifteen hundred drainage structures a year. That's just the basic cleanings that we do. In addition, those things have to have reports for our reporting requirements, so our sewer requires reporting, so you don't just clean it, you have to do an inspection report. Same thing with drainage, um, we have to do inspection reports on some of them for our M S four permitting requirements. Also, we use the VAC on for, uh, sewer emergencies in the middle of the night when people's cellars are filling up, um, and problems like that, we use it for emergencies. We also use it for numerous construction activities. We do test pits with it. It was used to create the holes for the, uh, concrete cylinders, that, the pedestals for each of the lights, things like that. We do test pitting with it, uh, if we have, um, like a sinkhole forming in a neighborhood, we'll go and use that to clean out a little bit and try and see what's going on. Um, so we do numerous things with that, um, and I have some numbers, so, again, I can, if you want, I can summarize what I have at your next meeting, um, but.
Yeah, let's do it next meeting.
Okay, I just, I didn't wanna spend tons and tons of time on it. I think I have enough to give you this, and then tell me if you want me to do more, but, okay.
No, 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 that wasn't the intention. The paperwork to look at. Yeah.
Rock with the report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Committee reports. Anybody got anything to report?
I had the, uh, SOAR, uh, commission meeting to go, you're welcome. They had quite a discussion on the, uh, new, uh, requirements regarding the, uh, adopting ordinances, R S A forty-one, colon, fourteen B. Uh, requires two public hearings, uh, be held at least ten days, but not more than twenty-one days apart. They talked about that, she'll take care, um, the secretary will take care of posting the, uh, the SOAR uses, ordinances, the dates and all that stuff. They talked about the, uh, old business SOAR accessibility fees and rates. Um, the next SOAR meeting is coming up here tomorrow night or sometime shortly, it's coming up, they're gonna have some information on that to discuss about that. Uh, they reviewed C I P paperwork, um, by Mike Girgro, that was prepared, um, making any changes, will be, uh, balancing some numbers. That's pretty much about it. Meeting, the meeting didn't last very long, um, they had a, the other discussion was about the Elm Street Pump Station. They're interested in a S R F loan, um, application due by June fifteenth. I think that's, was submitted and all set to go. That's pretty much it.
Uh, I attended the planning board meeting for David, and it was, and the whole subject was on the balloon test that was done, and the cell tower that they wanna put up. Uh, there were five hundred letters sent out to residents, we had six people come in. Actually, two couples and another person, I guess it was five people, come in to talk about it, and there was a couple of questions, mostly from, uh, Parsons Drive, that they could see the balloon up there. So, and, but there were no pictures from Parsons Drive, and, and the company that did the balloon test and the study is, thought they might have pictures from Parsons Drive, but that was pretty much, and it was continued to the next meeting, which is either July tenth or eleventh, I think, so.
There was a, I think, at the board you attended, there was a complication introduced because of the, uh, uh, an easement or boundary line adjustment.
Yes, but it wasn't, this, yeah, but it's not, it wasn't really a big deal. There was more discussion about the trees growing around it and things like that, but there wasn't that big of a deal, but the lot line adjustment. But it's coming, it's coming back to them, so. And that also, that's also, uh, where we couldn't get the system to work, so we could prompt in some complaints in our new gadgets that we now have. Anybody else? I know you went to library, I was, what's going on?
Um, well, I had C I P, and we completed all of our presentations, uh, so far, so that's good, moving right along with that, um, so everyone's presented. And then I had the library board, um, they just released, and I have it just to visually show you guys, if you wanna look, um, all the summer program materials. They've changed and rebranded it to summer experience versus the summer reading program, so they've come out with, like, a crazy extensive program list for kids, teens, and adults, and they're doing some really incredible things over there, um, so that's very exciting, and then they're getting their carpet replaced on August fourth. So that will be coming up, and they're having some volunteers move, um, some of that stuff, and they are still currently running their survey, and the survey closes on September first. So if you have not done that yet, they would very much appreciate it. It can be accessed on their website or their Facebook page.
Patron satisfaction type survey?
Uh, well, you should take it, and then you'll see the, uh.
No, is, is it, is that, is that what they're doing?
There's, it's a wide array of questions about what you personally use, things you might like to see, um, your overall satisfaction with the library, there, it's, it's a good survey. If you have a chance to take it, you definitely should.
Anybody else? I did a quick thing on the budget committee, Scott Gross came in, as you all know, Scott's taking over, um, effective July first at the S A U as the business manager, and he's coming up with some, um, new innovative ideas for the budget, the reporting, that might make it a little easier to understand, uh, the way it is, you know, it's been, with the lines and lines and lines. Um, so, he did that, and then, uh, budget committee, a month before, had requested, one of the members had requested to see zero budget, zero lines on the budget report, which generated, when I said twelve pages of zeros, and that's what it, it went from twenty-three to thirty-five.
These were lines that have, have zero on their entries.
Right. So the budget committee said, well, I guess we really don't need to see that. Kind of a waste of time, twelve pages of zeros, so, that's pretty much what happened there, and, you know, we're gearing up for September. Okay, that's it, Action Matrix. Abby?
I, I got a comment.
I'm just asking.
I got a comment on the second item down about Mill Street, and this, Megan? In our, in our last pamphlet, we had the, uh, a little reduced drawing of the survey done for the Mill Street site. Um, there were no marking, no markings on the contour lines as to what those lines represented, it, there was no values or any indexes to say that they were one-foot lines.
That's been updated, and we forwarded a PDF to Adam of the new plan for you guys.
So you corrected that, then?
Thanks.
Anything else?
Well, continuing on that site, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the, uh, one of the Biscataqua Conservancy individuals, Andy Cutter, he, he has, uh, a copy of that survey plat, and I, I guess, Megan, if I could have an updated copy of that, I appreciate it. And, uh, but, it, uh, it, I discussed that survey plat with Andy, and it is feasible that at some point in the future, a volunteer group could, uh, get together a grant. He's interested in finding a source for a grant to do some construction, to make a, a ramp or a set of steps from water level up to the higher elevation level. For, make that a, as in described in our, uh, Action Maker, to make it a future portage site for bypassing the dam. He's interested in, uh, seeking out grant opportunities as a volunteer group and see where that goes.
Anything else?
Let's see, coming down. The, second from the bottom, um, the two thousand and nineteen grant. That, uh, that grant application was submitted to the Trails Bureau last Thursday. I don't know what date that was, but.
It was last Thursday?
Last Thursday, the actual application was submitted to the Trails Bureau. Going one step up on the two thousand eighteen grant for the rail trail improvement. The action was to proceed into the bid process, and that was done last Friday. R F Ps went out to seven contractors. Seeking bids.
Thank you.
They have ten or twelve days to respond.
Kelly's making a motion, is that what you get the thing on?
Yeah. Motion to enter non-public? No, we have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, is anybody here for public comment? Go ahead, there was nobody here.
I just like doing it, too.
There, those guys already left, I know.
They left, they left, they, they left.
Motion to enter non-public session, R S A ninety-one H A, section three, uh, compensation and pending claims, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 That'll conclude our public portion of this evening's meeting. We'll be going into non-public now. Have a good evening, and happy Fourth of July to everybody.
Yeah, Peter's taking the day off.